I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting in order. And we'll get rolling with this. This is a special meeting, a hearing of the Pennington County Planning Commission for February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. And the hearing is to review the vacation home rental that is presently being reviewed. Roll call wise, we're all here except Jim Coleman, and Jim is here. And so the audience knows what we're doing here. I don't feel comfortable saying he's present, except in the past tense if we... He can't speak to us. He can't get through to us. So right now, I'm going to list that he is here viewing it. However, per the record, you've basically got to say that he's not here. So he is viewing it at this point in time. We're trying to solve that so that it is a two-way communication type of thing. And I'm just not sure. We don't have a legal person here that's going to tell me one way or the other. But I did want you to know he is on Zoom. We have a couple of other people that are in Zoom that are participating as well. The first thing we want to do is approve the agenda. And if the commissioners have read their agenda, I'd address on a motion.
So move?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda for this meeting that's been published. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. First item is the meeting procedure, and that's two steps. What I want to announce is I'm the chairman of the Planning Commission, but I also was, for lack of a better term, the navigator for the Vacation Home Rental Committee. I had no vote, but I did sit through and participate in conversations in every meeting. They met close to six months, almost every week. There was a few exceptions, just to give you an idea of what that group went through and tried to accomplish and what time they did it. We're going to limit, the commission has decided on limiting, and there's been another question that I'll address at the bottom of this. But the commission decided to limit discussion from the audience to three minutes with a second time of a minute and a half, which would meet Robert's rules. Try to limit your conversation to three, make it a minute and a half. Our intent here is a hearing. In other words, not to go item by item through the vacation home rental itself. That's going to be done eventually, and it will be done through the Planning Commission. So that'll be published and gone through. You'll be allowed also, if you had other speakers that don't want to speak and rather have you speak on their behalf, you're allowed to include four of those so you can speak as long as twelve minutes. There's a two-hour limit on the meeting, and I would hope you'd feel the same way. When the meetings get longer than two hours, we begin to lose some direction and some continuity. So it will be limited to two, and we'll address at that time whether extra meetings will be necessary. We voted that if there are extra meetings necessary, we're going to go ahead and authorize them so you folks will know at the end of the meeting. All right, I was asked whether, if we don't have enough people speak and we've got the two-hour limit, whether we would allow people to come back other than the rebuttal minute and a half. I am in favor of that, and I have no problem, and I'm going to make that call. Yes, if we only have and go through our three-minute opportunities and there's still an hour left, we're going to deal with that hour and let you people come forward and speak as you see fit. We do use speaker request forms. However, I guarantee you I will be asking whether anybody wants to speak, whether you got a form up here or not by the time we go through the forms. But we do give the forms precedent. I will call them as I've received them. Any questions from the commission on the instructions? Thank you. Now I'm going to turn it over to Brittany, and Brittany's got a few, what would you call it, announcements and acknowledgements. Go ahead.
Good morning, commissioners. Brittany Molitor, planning director. So I'm just going to go over some basic changes that the committee made that are different from the existing zoning ordinance requirements. They're just some basic bullet points. Just to give you an idea, we had fourteen meetings from June to October. The committee was set up of seven members that were appointed by the Board of Commissioners. During that time, they made several motions at those meetings. So staff took those motions that the committee made on changes that they were proposing to the ordinance and staff, and the state's attorney's office put these into the ordinance. So I just wanted to give you a history of where that came from and how the ordinance came about. But just a couple of major changes in the ordinance is that the committee recommended that VHRs be a special permitted use instead of a conditional use permit. The biggest change with the special permitted use versus a conditional use permit, a special permitted use is administrative, meaning that if they meet all the specified criteria that's in the ordinance, it's an administrative decision by the planning department, and then it's signed off and then approved. Where a conditional use permit is noticed, there's a hearing in front of this board for approval or denial. And that's one of the biggest changes.
Can I stop you just for a second? We've got Jim. Jim, can you hear us now? Can you try to talk to us? We're still not hearing you, Jim. Go ahead, Brittany.
Okay. And so there are...
Hey, now can you hear me?
You bet. Well, welcome. It looks like you had some work to get on. Thank you.
Sorry to arrive with such flair and fanfare.
All right, thank you. Brittany, go ahead.
All right. With the special permitted uses, there are still avenues. If someone that feels they're aggrieved by a decision of our department, they can still appeal that decision of a special permitted use to the Board of Adjustments. So I just wanted you to be aware that even though it's an administrative decision under the special permitted use, it still is appealable. So like I said, there are very specific criteria for the special permitted use. If they cannot meet any of those criteria, then it would kick into the conditional use permit process, which is the current process for a vacation home rental. VHRs require SPU or CUP in all residential districts, meaning they're prohibited in industrial districts, in commercial or highway service districts. They are used by rights. However, they still need to meet the basic criteria under the SPU. They are requiring a one-acre minimum, and they are prohibited in special flood hazard areas of the floodway. One of the biggest changes were parking limitations. The other one was the requirement for liability insurance. There was no minimum amount determined, just the fact that they wanted the vacation home rental owners to provide liability insurance. The other thing was it would require a biannual license with our office. Right now, they go through conditional use permit reviews that are reviewed yearly or triannually in front of the Planning Commission. It would not do that anymore. It would just be a biannual license through our office. And that the other major change were SPUs and CUPs under this proposal are not transferable. So those were the major changes that were made that are different from our current ordinance, so.
Any questions from the commission of Brittany's high points? Brittany, before I ever sit down, is there anyone in the audience that has a question on any of that that's been presented without going on? If you would come up just and introduce yourself, please, and then we'll go on to the next.
My name is Paul Gavick. I own a couple of properties in Pennington County. So why are we changing all this? I don't know why we're changing all this stuff, making it more expensive and more hoops to jump through.
It's a fair question.
May I answer?
I would say one of the things you've got to talk about is the special use permit as an initiator of what happened with the review of the vacation home rental, what the state did with the inclusion of a special use permit in county process.
Right, so with this, this is actually intended, or the intention of it is to make it simpler and faster because right now it's a conditional use permit, which by the time you go through the application deadline, the hearing requirements, posting a sign, and then you have a waiting period, you're looking at four months, five months maybe, from beginning to end. With SPU, it should cut down that time by a quarter or a third. So that was part of it, one of the biggest concerns. There were other concerns as far as the location of them, the number of them, the density of them. So we have seen this, and I know this commission has seen a lot of the comments, is what triggered the board to initiate a committee.
That, and there's been a lot of talk that the Planning Commission in reviewing conditional use permits has rubber stamped many things. And I sit here, and I don't believe in, and I don't think your members feel that way either, but we do review a lot of things that are very, very similar that drag out over a long period of time. And we also, in this ordinance, have, as a committee, they included many things that were not included before and almost, what would I say, additional requirements that hadn't been specified before that came out as conditions in conditional use permit. And instead, they're now a requirement of being a vacation home rental. Am I accurate there?
Sorry, there is also one other reason, and that isn't up here. There is, was concern about housing stock in the area and the number of homes that were being purchased for vacation home rentals in areas, too. So that was another concern.
Thank you. I hope that at least addresses some of the reason why it was reviewed again. Before we go on and start the meeting through the meeting procedure, I did want to kind of announce, there's two people in here that served on the original two committees, and there may be more. I've tried to look out, my eyesight isn't always the best. But we've got Joyce Shigrew, and Joyce served on the initial two committees. What, some of them, they go back twenty years, I think, the committees in regards to vacation home rental. And we've got Rita Chapman, and Rita served on the first two committees in regards to this, too. This is the third committee that has acted on that from the very time the first ordinance was installed in the county ordinance situation. And it's nice to see Rita and Joyce here, so, at least for me. And just in all fairness, I served on all three. And so I do know them, and they both have strong opinions about these in our present today. So it's time to take off, and we're going to start off with our speakers. I don't have a lot of speaker request forms. That doesn't mean you're not going to get an opportunity to speak. Dessel, please introduce yourself just for the record, and yes.
Good afternoon. My name is Dessel Peterson, D-E-S-Y-L Peterson, two-two-five-nine-eight Hazel Lane, Rapid City. I'm out in the county, and I served on this committee, and it was a real pleasure to do so. We had a very good group of people. We didn't always agree, but we were very civil to each other and actually became, I think we liked each other. So that was a nice thing that happened. I have submitted some written comments to the staff, which they can provide to you, and I will try to go through them fast. Originally, there are some clerical errors that I think should be changed, and I think that may have been provided to you as part of your packet. But I have some more substantive comments that I'd like to make. I support the ordinance, but I have a few changes that I'd like to suggest. The first is that on this specially, special permitted use, the procedure did not have, it has notice to the neighbors, but it did not have notice to the neighbors of the staff's decision. And I'm concerned about that because then we don't know what's the time period within which the neighbors can appeal. Secondly, if you do go to the special permitted use procedure, I think you should broaden the categories for when a CUP is required. And I think the Planning Commission should consider when are the times that you have actually denied CUPs in the past, and you should include those as criteria for when you would want to see them. And some examples that occurred to me were when an applicant has operated the VHR before obtaining the proper permit, when the applicant failed to cooperate with staff, and when the applicant has been previously denied or not approved for a VHR. The third thing is, I have a concern about the concentration of too many VHRs in a particular location. I think it would be appropriate for that to be a conditionally used permit for you to look at the question of the concentration when there are more than one within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of each other, that you should take a look at that and see if it makes sense given that particular neighborhood. It may not always be appropriate. There may be too many, but an example where it would be too many would be where a property owner is completely surrounded by VHRs and never wanted to be there. I mean, this was a residential neighborhood for that person, and all of a sudden is getting completely surrounded by VHRs. The fourth thing is, the current ordinance requires the VHR owner to appoint a local contact, and the new ordinance makes that optional. And I would like to see it still be a mandatory thing. And there are, in the new ordinance, there are two places that talk about local contacts, and I think those could be consolidated into one section. The fifth thing is that I think language that was approved by the committee on July eighth was not actually included, and that's on the maximum overnight occupancy. The ordinance says fourteen, but I think what we actually approved was two people per bedroom plus four. So the maximum could be fourteen because the maximum is five bedrooms. But I think we wanted to make it clear that if there are only three bedrooms, then it would be six plus four.
Is there questions for Dessel on that? Dessel, you brought up about the concentration. Can you explain a little bit more what your thoughts are in exception to the way the concentration is?
Well, my thinking is, I think about our neighborhood where we had two applications for vacation home rentals that were on either side of a property owner, and then there was stock of another one going right across the street. And that person said he never would have bought in our neighborhood if he had known that he was going to be surrounded on three sides by vacation home rentals, that it has devalued his living in the neighborhood. And I can go into all sorts of examples of things that have happened at those vacation home rentals, where it has impacted that particular property owner's own enjoyment of his property. And I know, it just seems like when you get a concentration that that's going to really devalue the person's enjoyment of that property.
Okay, and you do understand that even if we approve a section of an ordinance, we can't go back and reshuffle the cards on the ones that exist?
Exactly. I understand that.
Okay, I just wanted to, in other words, you've got one and all ready that's on three sides, apparently.
Well, actually, the Planning Commission ended up denying both of them. Thank you, by the way.
You got me, Dessel. Thank you.
And if I have the privilege to come back, I do have a few other comments.
All right. Thank you, Dessel. Jordan Hirschfield. And if you'd introduce yourself just for the record, and go ahead and start from there.
Yeah. My name is Jordan Hirschfeld. I, too, served on this committee. This is not a really easy thing to tackle. There's a lot to think about. And the fact that you guys have to make a decision today is wild because there's a lot of things that think there... I, too, support certain things with this ordinance. There are things that are on the record that I did not agree with. But one of the things I think I want to take my three minutes to talk about due to limits of time is the economic impact of vacation rentals within the Black Hills. This industry, I manage close to forty doors all around the Black Hills, not just in Pennington County. Was a blue collar worker all throughout my early twenties. My wife and I started renting out our place on Airbnb, had a lot of success. This industry has changed my life. It has likely changed my kid's life. And that is something that I think during these conversations that we need to discuss is for the people of the Black Hills that make up these vacation rentals. Oftentimes, we think of these individuals being people that live out of state. That is wrong. Most of these people are right here. They're your neighbors. They are people that live within our community that are managing these vacation rentals, that are providing jobs for other people that live here in the Black Hills. We staff close to twenty people when it comes to subcontractors. We also have some full-time employees as well. This is a huge economic impact imprint on the Black Hills. There are, you know, South Dakota is a tourist state. Fifty-four thousand jobs are provided because of the industry of tourism in our state. And that is something I just want to bring to you guys' attention to think through as you vote on these things. The last thing with my limited time here, this one-acre minimum limits a lot of property owners to be able to run their vacation rental. I have a number of stories that I could tell you of clients that make up those property owners that are under one-acre minimums. But it's something that should be thought through and considered. There are a number of vacation rentals currently that are operating under that one-acre minimum, though not legally permitted. And I think the county would agree, there is a permit problem when you have a thousand vacation rentals and only ten percent of those are permitted. That is an issue. Well, how to get people into compliance is by having requirements that are accessible and easy for people to sign up for.
Time.
So anyways, thank you guys for listening. If you have any further questions, I'd love to hear those.
Questions for Jordan? I do have one, and you get on it, unpermitted ones.
Yeah.
Just briefly, what's your stance on unpermitted, your opinion?
My opinion on unpermitted things, I can see, I encourage all of our clients to get permitted, for one. But I do see a place where there is property owners that, particularly under that one-acre minimum, that can't get legally permitted, that are still running and operating. And I think there needs to be a place within the county for those property owners. So that would be my opinion.
And you manage in approximately forty units now?
Yeah, yep.
Thank you. Rita. Well, they know who you are already. I made sure. Rita is one of the people I was talking about that served on the initial, the first two, didn't you, Rita?
Yeah, Rita Chapman. I was on both vacation rental ones in the beginning. Don't start my time yet then.
Thank you for serving.
I live in Silver City.
And we'll start the timer. You go ahead and say what you want.
Okay. From reading over it, we've always thought SUPs were a great idea and the way it should go. I know we tried to get that through in two thousand eight, two thousand nine when we came through with this, that we thought SUPs were great. I do think that reading through this whole thing is a little bit of micromanaging private property. I do think as a private property owner that to have some of these things put on is a little overreach of a government. I feel that a lot of this is put in by HOAs, people who are in subdivisions with covenants, that the covenants don't take care of vacation home rentals, and now they're using the county to be their HOA. I think that's not right. I think the HOA should take care of themselves, and I think they should make their own HOA strong for that development, and they should take care of that. I think the housing woes are not a result of VHRs. I don't think it's a direct result of VHRs. I think everything is a combined influence to make vacation, housing to be quite a woe or some issues with housing. I'd actually construct with going through details, but we have been compliant from day one that we could be able to be compliant. I have less than, I have two properties that are less than one acre in Silver City. Silver City is seventy-five percent vacation homes. Seventy-five percent of the people do not live there full-time. So I need to have a path to keep myself compliant with my vacation homes. So do I have to meet the new standards? Do I have to be compliant? Am I going to have to be reviewed, and then I lose my vacation rental permits? How did you come up with the fees? Where does the money go? That's a lot of high, compared to other fees that I looked at. They are quite high compared to the other fee schedule for conditional use permits. Just simple things even, like a twenty-four-seven contact. I am my own contact, but once in a while I mountain bike. Well, it's not always twenty-four-seven. I might be not out of my range of my cellphone for twenty minutes or an hour and a half or something like that. Transferable. It says non-transferable. We took care of this at the last one where we were able to transfer for husband-wife issue. My husband and I are both on the, sorry, I'm talking fast. We're both on our titles. When he passes away, because he is a little bit older, can I still run my business? Can I still make a livelihood? Can I still be in the community I live in, in the place I love, doing the thing I love to do? So I think we need to make it where there is a path for transference because according to the county, when he passes away, and my name goes off the title, that's a transfer.
Time.
Okay, any questions?
Questions for Rita? Mike?
No. I've got one from a question you asked me, Rita. It was on the same thing, the transferability. At that time, you also felt that you had a right to leave that transfer in your estate if you were the only one left, if you were allowed to have it transferred to you. Is that correct?
Yes, because according to...
I did want time to limit. I know you also believe that, too, so.
Yeah, it was, say that again until I hear it right.
That you had a right to have it as an item in your estate, real property, and you wanted to transfer it to one of your heirs.
Right, right. Like my child who grew up doing the business we're doing, if she decides to ever move back to South Dakota, this is being a good way for her to make a living.
I just wanted to make sure the timer didn't cut you off on that you also believe this. Anything else for Rita? Thank you, Rita. Michelle? Hovland? Please introduce yourself just for the record and go on from there.
I'm Michelle Hovland. I live up on Norris Peak Road. And I just want to say I'm not against vacation home rentals, but I do have concerns since I had a very bad experience with one. So I first want to say I do agree with Dessel, the changes that she was wanting. And then I'll explain that I'm concerned about being able to go straight to a special permitted use process rather than the conditional use permit because although I understand that notices will be sent to property owners, there is no mention of a public hearing, and if the process limits the number of property owners notified compared to the CUP. The CUP requires letters sent to property owners within five hundred feet of the subject property and requires a sign be posted. And the SUP process simply states the letter must be sent to those people who are adjacent, and no sign is required, and no public hearing will be held. In addition, the CUP process, in the CUP process, the applicant must prove they have mailed the letters by turning in the certified mail receipts. But this is not required in the SUP process. I understand now that you're trying to make it a faster process, which does concern me. And here's, I would rather have the CUP process of how the area people are notified because without this proper notice, property owners, or anybody in the, lots of people in the neighborhoods could be living there and not even know that these are going to be popping up. And in our opinion, in my neighborhood, the rentals change the dynamics of that neighborhood, bringing in more vehicles and noise activity, unknown people as well, safety and environmental concerns. Many vacation homes in the areas are in places where there are private wells, and they almost always have a higher occupancy rate than a regular home. And so more water will be used. And so if the water levels of those wells run low, all of the residents suffer, not just the one, the property owner adjacent or the person that owns the property. I believe that the public hearing is really important. A group of us came in front of this committee a couple of months ago because the regulations this county had in place were not being followed. And since nobody was monitoring this without our impact, the rule breaking that this person was doing would have continued, and there were dangerous activities that would have continued, and probably eventually we would have had a fire. It appears there's a large number of these applications. And so if the staff is the one making all of the recommendations and the final say on it, I just want you to know that the staff in our situation made some pretty big mistakes. They didn't do the investigation of looking at all the different VRBOs that it could have been advertised on, and they were taking the word of somebody who was literally lying. And finally, to me, it's really important that I can contact my elected county commissioner before the permits are awarded. My communication with my county commissioner has been invaluable asset, and it allowed my voice to be heard, which is why he's elected.
Thanks, Michelle. Questions for Michelle?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Now, I think there's some people out there that are, you know, they're pro-vacation home rentals, and they are revenue generators, but I'd be curious to see how many people out there, not against, but concerned with vacation home rentals. If you'd raise your hands, if you're the concerned, I'm just curious. Because, you know, when I became commissioner four years ago, and because my district encompasses the Black Hills, I started getting a lot of phone calls. And so they said, "Well, my neighbor has applied for a vacation home rental." And what gets me is that all the neighbors come in that oppose it, but they still got, it still got approved. And I just thought, why do we send notices out if nobody listens to the people and they come in to express their concerns? That's what, that's a problem I have, is if the neighbors, if the majority of the neighbors are opposed to that just because they don't know who's going to be there night after night, or they think it's going to decrease their property value, I think we need the listener their voice a little bit more. That's just my thoughts.
Any other questions?
I've got one, just so I get my notes right. What you're suggesting then, and it all relates to the water use, the public hearing, and the elected official notice, is you're suggesting that this particular ordinance does not have enough of the notice in both sides, the, what you call the special use permit, as well as the conditional use. Did I write that correctly?
Exactly. I laid them side by side today, and, you know, the special use or permitted use is just, just send out a notice.
To adjacent property owners.
Yes, and there's no accountability. What's laid out in the CUP is quite nice. And that's how half of our neighbors found out that this was happening, was from the sign. And then, of course, the emails that went around, but.
All right. Thank you, Michelle.
Mr. Chair, I've got a quick question for Brittany. Brittany, on the special use permit, and I probably in here and I don't see it, will they have the signs? That is something I hadn't thought about.
No, they don't. It's just a notification to the abutting property owners.
Because she brings up a good point as far as people in the neighborhood not knowing what's going on.
So the sign requirement for the CUPs actually come from state statute. So the sign size and the duration that it's out and the requirement for it is actually statutory requirement for conditional uses.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Brittany, before you down so that we clarify something, so for the committee, really, and you brought it up there. Our wording is different, the abutting versus the law requirement under the CUP. And the committee selected that because there was times property owners that should be notified weren't notified. So this committee, if I remember right, wanted to make sure that everyone that was abutting at least had to go revisited and handed, that the process was being done as far as a special use permit. Is that correct? Did I remember that right?
I think there was discussion on it, but what actually, I think the motion was that there was just notification by first-class mail.
Correct.
Of those. There was a lot of discussion about speaking to the neighbors about who the local contact was, that 24/7 contact, so the neighbors knew.
So that didn't get included?
Pardon, yes.
Okay.
So in that notice, that was one of the things that was discussed at length, was that that local contact or that 24/7 contact was made available to the neighbors so that that would be there, if there was an issue, that the property owner operator would be notified at the time.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that the committee was represented. They did, on several occasions, discuss this exact thing and opt to go with a little different viewpoint, but it didn't all get included in the final draft.
Right. The SPU process in statute doesn't require the notification. It is something that the committee proposed in the ordinance, so it'd be an ordinance requirement.
Thank you. Nathan Dirksen.
Good evening. My name's Nathan Dirksen. Anything else I need to say before I can go?
Nope.
All right. I'm a local property manager, do long-term, short-term, got about 140 properties. One thing that I want to address is there are a number of things in here that just, this isn't ready to be voted on, it needs to go back to the draft. That, we can't vote to finalize this. When there are contradictory things, there's things on both sides, wherever you stand on it, that both parties disagree with. I think we need to extend this. That's what I think first off, rather than going through and saying all the things I do and don't like about the draft. The one thing that keeps coming up, though, that I'd like to address, and you brought it up, Brittany, is the affordable housing. I manage long-term rentals on the affordable housing and on the multimillion dollars, seeing what happens. In the last three years, 45% of all my long-terms have been out-of-state renters, not locals. And they're renting sight unseen. The vacation rentals, we're talking about 500,000 end up, and those are the cheap vacation rentals. And the market is so competitive, if you don't have a nice property, you're not getting rented, just from a competitive standpoint, regardless of the rules. So if you don't have these phenomenal properties, I'm not turning a $600,000 house into affordable housing. That's going to rent for something that I can't afford to rent in, even though there weren't managing it. So that's not going to affect the affordable housing side of it. Now, of those 1,100, I'm sure there are some, I actually managed one in North Rapid. It's my own personal house. It was the first house I ever had. It's what got me into property management 10 years ago. I put an affordable housing person in there because I didn't know anything about what I was doing. I didn't do a background check. I didn't do a credit check. They would have failed all that. They did $60,000 worth of damage to my house. I didn't have it in savings. I had to sit on that. Nobody helped me. Section eight didn't pay for the deposit or the damages. The tenant didn't have any money. They finally left, and their party in present was to break out every window in a three-story building and leave the water running, just so that we could pay that extra little utility bill. That's the affordable housing. A vacation rental, I don't make anything extra, but the lawn gets mowed every single week, the snow gets removed every single time it snows. It gets cleaned professionally every week, and the people are my traveling nurses. I'm a fellow paramedic. That's the places we look for when we go in for a couple of months. So having these short-term rentals, you're bringing in people and giving people options that otherwise they wouldn't have had. And then as a traveler, they make all the difference in the world. When we travel for medical reasons, I've got a sick wife. We go to Denver. Vacation rentals make all the difference. Whereas when you have two dogs, kids, and two adults in a hotel room, we're at each other's throats because the dog's, you know, biting your toes while your kid's jumping on your head in your tiny little hotel room. Vacation rentals fix that. And that's my time.
Questions for Nathan? Nathan, I have one that I'd be interested in because I've been so long involved with this. Any of those items that you feel need the extended discussion, extended look? I hope you take the time, at least write them down and get them to the planning office.
Yeah, if you guys would like, I'd be happy to.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Marshall McCauley. Marshall, you know the routine. Introduce yourself for the record, and then we'll push the button, and you got your time.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Marshall McCauley with the Gulf Ice Mountain Lodge. I'm a property manager. It's good to see you. A big crowd here today, and a lot of property managers. I have a lot of notes, but I will just kind of fine-tune to what my thoughts are. Everything that's proposed here has already been done, and it's done by the Real Estate Commission. And I see that a lot of the problem, and maybe, is that there isn't enough options for individuals to make a decision. I have three, which were to maybe include something to have a property manager license. For the rentals out there, have a property manager. The third was neither, and I believe at that time, maybe that's where you imply the fees or different criteria in there. And that way, everything is easier for the county because the Real Estate Commission, they give you a property manager number. We have to go through yearly, we have to go through 12 hours yearly, and that takes about four days to do that. So it's consistently improving on the knowledge for the property managers. And what I see out there is a lot of individuals renting it out on their own, and a lot of the problems. So I'm in favor for both. I rent properties, but I can see it on both sides because I have others that rent on their own, that I live near, and I can see the difference of how those are managed. And that's it. And if there's any remaining time, Rita can have that.
All right. Well, it looks like we're going to have extra time anyway from the, the. I do have one. When you're talking about property manager license, is that similar to what we do as far as licensing septic installers? Tell me what you're meaning there.
It's a real estate license is what it is, and a property manager has to go through the course to get approved, take a test, and to become a property manager. And a lot of the rules and regulations, they're there. I looked at the first line on here, and I thought maybe it was a copy and paste from the Real Estate Commission that said, "Properties intended for the protection of public health, safety, and welfare to minimize the impacts of such use." And that's the first, you know, and that's what they have on theirs, that's what they strive to do. And the nice thing about that, everything, I can put my property manager license or number on each of the properties that I manage, and that way, if the county has a problem, they can look, who's the property manager of this? And then take it up with the Real Estate Commission. And then potentially lose our property management license and all the properties, which we wouldn't want to do. So there are, I think, easier ways, or maybe some additional rules that could be put in place there to help make things easier for the county and the people.
Any other questions for Marshall? Thank you, Marshall. Is it Stacy Kaiser? Please introduce yourself just for the record.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Stacy Kaiser, and I own a property here in Rapid City, South Dakota. First of all, what I would like to start with is this appears, as it stands, to be a far overreach of our government, violating our Fifth Amendment right to do what we will with our property. And this just really overstretches that, and I want to also endorse what Rita said about micromanaging our properties. A question that I'd like to present is, one of the things I have concern with is why the one acre minimum? When there are plenty of properties that exist under one acre that probably have just as many complaints that have been brought forth today? Parking, for instance, noise, for instance, not knowing the community that you're moving into, and then being able to choose or not choose what your neighbors are like? I also wanted to point out that the state of South Dakota, the city and the county are already making money off of this through the taxes. So if this is all put in place, who is going to police this? How are you going to make sure that these properties are fulfilling these obligations? So it also appears that any of the property owners that are in this audience are already caring for their property. In fact, immaculately so, that there should not be any concern that the property value is driven down because of the care of the property. Also, the use of water was brought up as a concern, and the parking, of course. But the use of water is, most of these individuals that are coming and staying in these spaces are not doing loads and loads of laundry, and they're not there all day long. So it feels like a mute point to bring up water use. Also, the traffic was brought up. I think that seems like a ridiculous thing to be concerned about when there is plenty of traffic in any neighborhood which is managed by our police force. So this traffic concern seems also to be a mute point. I think that Marshall, excuse me, not Marshall, the gentleman before Marshall mentioned that this is hardly ready to be voted on. And I think with a lot of the concerns that have brought up today, I really hope that there's an opportunity that you will table this and tell more details and contradictions are stricken from the proposal.
Thank you. Questions for Stacy?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
You talked about the police force that monitors the roads, but that's not the case out in the county. We have road districts with no, nobody patrolling them, so it is an issue for some neighborhoods.
Understood.
And likewise, we, as a board, have heard many times about neighborhoods where people are already hauling water. It is, that's an issue too. We're not just making these up. We hear these.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Now, we've got people on Zoom too. I believe, Jeff, you're on Zoom?
Hi, Charlie. I'm here.
All right. And did you desire to weigh in and get your three and a half minutes?
Is there anyone else still?
That's the last of the request forms at this point, but of course, I've got some decisions to make then after we, but I wanted to make sure, I know you can't hand one to me.
I would like to speak, but I'm kind of gathering my notes based on what has been said. Can you come back to me?
Yes, I can. Thank you. And then there was one more person that was on Zoom, and I didn't have a name. Did you desire to speak at this time?
I don't have anything to say, really, at this point. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for being there. All right. Anyone else that would like to speak that hasn't submitted? Sure. Please introduce yourself just for the record and take right off from there.
My name is Jeff Hoffman. I do not own any vacation rental properties, and I don't intend to anytime in the near future. But in reading through this, I do have several concerns. One of them, we'll just start with kind of the fundamental rights of a property owner, that being that when we own our property, that we have certain property rights to do with it, what we assume and what we want to do. There's been many discussions and concerns about folks using the properties. We don't get to make these decisions when we have a neighbor purchase the home. They don't have to provide notice to the homeowners in the neighborhood before they purchase a home. So the idea of requiring this of somebody who's staying temporarily for a few, a short period of time. I also have some concerns because the very beginning of this cites public health, safety, and welfare, which is really covered by much of what, where this was apparently copy and pasted from, and that's the administrative portion of the South Dakota Legislature, the 440208, which pretty well covers all the health, safety, and welfare concerns. This reaches far beyond, imposes a lot more requirements. And in the legal world, we would call this subterfuge, where you're making a stated purpose, and then you put in a whole bunch of rules that are really designed at something else. And a lot of these rules, looking at the totality of this, appear to be not at regulating vacation home rentals, but appear to be aimed at preventing vacation home rentals. The one acre one is a perfect example of this. I keep hearing that there were concerns about this, there were concerns about that. I'm not hearing any concerns about real health, safety, or welfare issues that aren't addressed by that administrative, but I'm hearing a lot of anecdotal information regarding these other concerns. And this one acre is, I think, a perfect example. I haven't heard any data about how many lots are one acre versus less than one acre, and how expanding it to a lower acreage would somehow impact that affordability of housing. I haven't heard any data. I've heard anecdotal references to how it might or could impact that, but I'm not seeing any data. And the lack of data is really concerning to me, that we can't point to a, hey, if we allow this, this is how many houses we won't have. A lot of this will be taken care of by the market. If we have too many vacation homes on the market, prices come. Uh, if we have too many vacation homes on the market, prices come down, people stop putting vacation homes on the market. When we make rules like this, when we make these broad, wide sweeping rules, what we're doing is we're limiting our, our rights. Uh, there's a, a concept called preemption in the legal world where when you, it, communities can provide greater rights to people, but they can't provide lesser rights. This feels very much the opposite. The state has already identified what the health and safety concerns are. They, they put those in there. And now what we have is we have an overreaching where we are limiting somebody's ability to do what they want with their property. Regardless of whether I own a vacation property, which again, I will note that I don't, this is a real concern to me that we are, are feeling really comfortable about limiting the rights of somebody, uh, in the property that they own.
Time.
And, and I will just echo what I've heard already. Um, I don't think this is ready for vote.
Mr. Chair. I don't, you know, I don't see this ordinance as trying to limit your rights. What I see this ordinance trying to do is protect property rights of the neighbors. So that's what I see. Not really trying to limit your rights, but you've got to realize neighbors that don't want vacation home rentals, they have rights too.
I, I think that's a, a wonderful point, and what I would point to is something that everybody has already, several people have brought up before. That's the purpose of covenants. This is a broad, wide sweeping, county-wide rule that we're trying to put in place that doesn't take into account that there are well-populated areas versus sparse, sparsely populated areas. Uh, areas out in Custer are very different than the more densely populated Rapid City. Nothing in here accounts for that. This one acre piece, uh, is clearly preventing vacation rental properties in very specific areas.
You know, we had, uh, one of the ones I got involved with, was a, a pretty nice subdivision, and they had a set of covenants and, and, uh, the, uh, covenants had no commercial activity, well then, somebody wanted to put a vacation home rental in there and, and, uh, and it, and they got it. And the neighborhood, you know, they weren't, uh, too excited about it because they, everybody bought on the premise it was just going to be single-family residences and not commercials. So anybody that, I suggest that neighborhoods that don't want these subdivisions, that they actually put it in their covenants, so that it doesn't come to the county. Let the neighborhood take care of it or homeowners association. So other than that, uh, you know, uh, and there are, there is a subdivision called, uh, that's out there by Three Forks. And when they did that subdivision, they did it on the premise that it's going to be single-family residents and vacation home rentals. So when somebody buys a single-family residence, they know right up front that, you know, there's, the neighbor could be a nightly rental. So I'd like to see more of them subdivisions where they just, where they, uh, everybody knows up front that it's gonna, uh, be a combination, vacation rentals or single-family. But, uh, you know, I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thanks, Jeff.
Charlie? I just, we've had several people talk about the one acre minimum.
Right.
But that's in the existing, um, ordinance, so that isn't something new. Just saying. And I don't believe there's any, I don't believe there's any intention to vote on this.
No, we're not going to get into shouting match. That's ended. Or I'm gonna adjourn the meeting, one or the other. The comments from the audience aren't going to be acceptable. I don't allow people to turn around, shake their finger at you or us. That's the way the game's played. When this gets personal, I guarantee you, the meeting's gonna be gone, and we're gonna be the responsible parties, and I'm not gonna let that happen. Okay? I've done, and you can be my friend, and I, I would ask you to leave if you got out of hand, so, and I'd still respect to be your friend. Yes, sir. No, that's fine. That's what we're on right now, is people that would like to have their three minutes before we talk about opening it up for general discussion. By the way, I made my decision. We're gonna open it up for general discussion. Thank you.
Uh, commissioners, um, I'm just, uh, probably gonna come across selfish and probably, uh...
You've got to introduce yourself.
Sorry, I'm, I'm Matt Erwin.
Matt?
Yep, I'm Matt Erwin. Probably gonna come across selfish and, uh, seem like I'm kind of throwing some of, uh, people's concerns aside about their neighbors and, um, I'm only a short-term mentor. It was my first one, man. Uh, it's kind of a personal matter that sits close to my heart. It was my first home. Um, me and my wife, we moved out to the valley, and, you know, after a while, we're like, oh, you know, we start family, you know, start to live the American dream. Um, life happens. So, uh, after one, we got two. After two, we're like, well, we gotta find out who's gonna take care of the kids and homes and lodgings. Now the house is no longer affordable when it was affordable. So we had to figure out, well, how are we gonna cover our mortgage? Um, well, we turned to, we took out, we, we looked at our, uh, retirement savings, and we're like, you know, we could make this happen. Well, that's, uh, we did that, and, uh, we started pursuing that, and, um, I don't fuck my neighbors because I'm a courteous citizen, you know? We have good relationships with them. They actually, uh, watch the property from me closely because I have a property management company, uh, manage it for me. But I was able to save my house because I used STRs. Um, I'm a veteran. I put my time in, I use a VA loan, I did all the right things. And so I turned to this app, and, you know, well, that house there on that lot is actually, um, less than an acre. So by unsregulating that, you've taken away the American dream. So I didn't think that, you know, it would seem like that would not be your, uh, position. Time. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions for Matt? Matt, don't, you're also wearing a cover, just so the audience knows, you're encumbered by one additional thing. Most people do not think of the valley is the largest unincorporated area in the state of South Dakota, Rapid Valley. It's, it, it isn't all, gonna be long between, be that it's thirty to thirty-five thousand people. And so they fall under the, uh, direction of the county, which many times creates a lot of conflict because there's a density out there, and then there's places that aren't dense. So I understand what you're saying, Matt, uh, and we got it down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. We are gonna, that's the end of it. Uh, Jess, uh, yeah, I'm gonna have her speak after you because you raised your hand, but I'm gonna go ahead and then we'll address Jess after that. She said she'd like to speak later. Go ahead, sir. Please introduce yourself just for the record.
Hi, I'm Pat Briesmeister, and I probably represent, um, the other side of, uh, what everybody's talked about here, and, and I'm the old guy, retired, uh, want to enjoy the tranquil beauty of the Black Hills. And, um, if you want horror stories about traffic, about, uh, personal safety, I can give you a mess. If you want to talk about covenants, um, and suing people, taking them, I'm in my third year of that. So it's not fun. I don't see this being ready. There's no way to, to administer this whatsoever. Everybody stated, well, my stuff is under an acre, that's been, that was already existing. So I, I'm not sure what you're trying to do here. You're, you, on some angle, I see it as a positive, on other angles, I see, there's a lot of business people here that are trying to make a business out of something that never really was supposed to be a business. It was a mom and pop idea of, um, renting out, you know, when the kids leave or something like that. They've turned it into a business. I, I, I can't argue with that. But think about the old people that are here and the safety that's, it was brushed upon, but your main objective is to protect us, the individual. Show me how this recommendation, this ordinance protects people. You don't know any of these people that come to these rentals. They've talked about damage. They talk, that stuff really happens. And do we have to wait for a mass shooting? Because you can go into any other state, and there's all sorts of Airbnb mass shootings that go on. So I would look to you all to say, where's the safety in this? How do you protect the residents? Thank you.
Questions, Pat? All right. Thank you, Pat. Jess, you got your thoughts together right now?
I do. Um, I, I just want to comment, I think people are getting confused on, um, this is a county issue, not a city issue. So people that have vacation rentals in the city limits, this is not, the county rules are not gonna affect them. Um, I have six vacation rentals that I manage, and to the gentleman that spoke about having a licensed property manager, um, I do not agree with that. I feel like I can personally manage my properties better than hiring it out. Um, another comment I would like to make, and this is more towards the ordinance, um, on the insurance issue, they keep bringing up business liability, and that's not exactly what was discussed. It was more, or it was having the requirement to have a short-term rental policy instead of a basic homeowner's policy, because most insurance policies for a basic homeowner's does not cover short-term renter. So a short-term renters' policy is a commercial policy that will have liability in addition. So I just wanted to, to, uh, clarify that. Um, and as far as people, um, there are two sides to this, and that's why this ordinance is important, because there has to be a compromise between both sides. You cannot make both sides a hundred percent happy. Um, and this process is just trying to simplify the entry into the market, um, and to lessen the burden on the county of processing these. And also, people need to realize in the county, there's about four or five hundred vacation rentals, and there are only one hundred that are licensed. That is a safety concern that needs addressed. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Jess. Questions for Jess?
Yeah, uh, Jess, I have a question on the short-term rental coverage. Do you get that through your homeowner's insurance? I, I assumed you did.
I'm, I'm sorry, my Zoom cut out. Can you repeat that, please?
I was just curious. I was under the impression the short-term rental coverage could be had with homeowner's insurance.
In my experience, I've been doing this for about ten years, a standard homeowner's policy typically has a, uh, stipulation in there that if you rent less than six months, um, to a tenant, it's not covered under a basic homeowner's. That's where the short-term renter policy comes in. Um, and there's only a handful of companies that I have found that even offer it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Jess? Yes, ma'am. Please introduce yourself just for the record.
Rebecca Costello. I don't have any Airbnbs in the county. I have some in Rapid City. I also have had long-term rentals, and I've switched to, uh, the short-term rental. The properties are in much better condition. The people that come are here vacationing most of the time. They're not even at the home during the day. Um, we shovel the walk, a couple people mentioned this, the lawn gets mowed. When I've had long-term properties, um, if you have a tenant in there, which I've had, no short-term tenants cause any trouble, but I've had many long-term tenants cause trouble, and it's a lot harder to, um, have those people leave your property, which, in my opinion, is, is a lot more detrimental in a neighborhood. So I think I completely understand that there are these situations that some people have, and I, I like the idea of the homeowners' association, and also as you become a homeowner, you kind of have to look into the neighborhood and what might happen there. Um, but you also can't, um, buy a house. Like right now, I have a property that I have a longer-term person who, she doesn't shovel, she doesn't take care of the property. Luckily, she, I'm letting her leave early, and she's taking that. Um, but the, the neighbors next door, they also don't take very good care of the property. And I kind of wish I didn't buy that property now that I know how they take care of the property, but I can't do anything about a long-term person next door. Um, does that make sense? So I, um, I think this has a lot of restrictions with the, the one acre ones talked about, the parking restriction, the fees for it, um, the processing. I have friends, um, in the county, uh, that have like five or six or ten cabins, so I know that's zoned differently, but most of their, um, regulations are inspection through the Department of Health, and I could be wrong, but it seems like they have a lot less restrictions put on them, and I, I understand that they're zoned differently. But I would think that your, um, review process through short-term rentals, the fact that you've put a lot of money into remodeling, furnishing it, most of the people that I know that have vacation rentals take good care of their properties. And it seems like in these neighborhoods, it'd be more, which I think people are steering away from, is they don't talk to their neighbors anyway. And if we had more of that, which I know you can't control, um, there would be a lot more benefit, um, just being able to work those things out within a home association.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm curious, how, how do you screen on a short term? Because I'm not in the vacation home rental, but obviously, you want to know who's gonna be staying in your rental. And so if you do long-term, and I've got long-term, I would, I would interview them. And there's a number of different ways you can interview on a long-term, but how do you do the short-term, or do you have that confidence level that somebody's not gonna come in there and, and be a pedophile or something?
Right. So there are, I can't check for that. Um, the other thing is people generally stay two days to maybe seven days. So if you have somebody who isn't your preferred person, they're gone in a week. Um, so that's a, that's a nice thing. Through a lot of the booking sites, there is a review process. So when people don't take care of your property, they don't get a good review. So I'll often look and see if the, how the reviews are. And I would say for the most part, the rentals, uh, people are, you know, they're not like a hundred dollars a night. They're a little more expensive. So not to, I should get, not get in trouble saying that, but if you're gonna put forth the effort to go on a vacation and spend money, you have, um, maybe a little bit more means, maybe a little bit more, um, responsibility. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, in talking about the minimal one acre, that, you know, one size don't fit all. And for an example, around nineteen seventy-two, uh, Idleways was developed on the premise that they were gonna be nightly rentals, and a lot of those lots in Idleways are under an acre. And so I would support, you know, uh, if, if everything, the condition was right. I, I don't have a problem being less than an acre in Idleways because that's what it was designed for. But then you get down into a, a newer subdivision where the minimum lot size is three acres, well then the one acre might be problematic. So I think there's gotta be some give and take on the one acre.
How did that one acre get put in?
I'm not sure. We'd have to, Brittany can answer that.
You gonna let me answer that? Or you gonna let Brittany? It's actually very simple. Um, the one acre was never included, uh, in any one of the, uh, three meetings until now. Uh, the previous two did not include the one acre requirement. It came up, uh, during the first review of having a vacation home rental, and I'm shooting from memory, so don't shoot me. The Board of Commissioners, and I won't even name who, there was one Board of Commissioner absolutely refused to support any, um, vacation home rental period, and he had enough votes to carry it down unless the one acre was put in. Uh, they tabled, and they came back, and they attempted a number of times to clarify the thing, and the commissioner stuck. So it got in there. Then, in the second time, uh, it came up, uh, the, the second ordinance review, uh, it was carried over. And that's, to my knowledge, having served three of these things, how it came about. Brittany, you can fill in if I left any detail out.
In the original, um, proposal, in the original approval, it wasn't allowed in suburban residential at all. Um, and then they found out that there was other legal non-conforming lots in other residential districts, uh, like agriculture or rural residential that were under an acre, but because of the zoning district that it was in, it was allowing a vacation home rental. Um, so that was one of the reasons, and the other reason is that, um, out in the hills or in areas where there are community water and sewer, um, that you could have a well and a septic on one acre. So that was kind of the history.
Okay. Thank you. That's the best we can. Do you, would you like to get up and say something? Sure. Because as soon as we don't, then we're gonna need a motion to, if we're gonna open it for discussion. Just so the commission knows where we're headed next. Go right ahead, ma'am.
My name is Amanda Hutton, and I'm a Pennington County resident. I am not a vacation rental owner. I wanted to just take a quick moment and read to you from the National Association of Realtors website regarding the rights of American land ownership. Land use and property rights. The freedom to buy, sell, and utilize property as protected in the Fifth Amendment underlies all real estate transactions and markets. Any restrictions placed on a property owner from realizing the high Any restrictions placed on a property owner from realizing the highest and best use of that property. Hinders economic growth and development, and reduces freedoms inherent in our society. I am in favor of special permitted use, I am not in favor of government outreach. And I do have a question for Commissioner Ross Connect. It feels personal when you are more interested about the neighbor than the individual property owner's right. Please familiarize yourself with the, the, uh, um, process of Airbnb and VRBO tenants. On making sure those tenants coming into the properties are safe, good people. I am a VRBO user, we love to travel, we love to rent, and I certainly can't imagine. Ever being a problem to a neighbor. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, so.
Go ahead.
Just, uh, for your information, I've been appraising real estate for 30 years. And I do highest and best use analysis. And the first, uh, use out of the forest got to be legally permissible. I think that's what we're trying to do here, is what is legally permissible? There's got to be some type of, it's got to be governed to a certain extent, we just can't go up for a free throw. I'm, I'm just telling you that there's property rights, and I heard earlier today that we tried to find that balance. And I think that's why you have an ordinance, to find that balance. Because you got a property right, if you want to do vacation home rental, that's fine. Just remember, there's another side of the story, and they have property rights too. And that's what we're trying to do here.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Now you that are now raising your hands, and I see we got a second go around here, and you certainly have your right. You realize what I said, we're going to open this to discussion, we're going to skip the meter. I'm asking the commission to make a motion, that's what I'm going to. But first I'd like to tell you three little things that slipped by in all the testimony. That I would like you to be aware of before you come up. That, that you need to think about. As we as commissioners up here, we've got a job to do. Six of us are volunteers. There's a rotating member of the Board of Commissioners that comes out of the five. It rotates, and they sometimes switch with each other, so it's not necessarily a normal rotation. But think about a couple of things. In South Dakota. Anybody, even in Rapid City, has the right to rent their place for 14 days. No, don't have to pay any, in, uh. State sales taxes, anything like that, you've got the right. It used to be called the rally rule. And now it's actually a law. They used to look the other way. I came here from Illinois, and I couldn't believe anybody telling me the whole state looks the other way in a law. But they looked the other way, and everybody decided that was dangerous, so they made it a law, and it's now 14 days anywhere. And that applies to Lake, uh, Lake Madison back east as well now, they made it a law. Number two, uh, it's been noted three or four times. There's actually about 110 to 125 permitted vacation home rentals in Pennington County. Versus what the committee studied. 900 to 1100 operating ones, depending on what time you. And whose service you use to see the listed ones. There's a number of services, you can see how many are listed or whatnot. And the last thing is, you got to really consider whether we have zoning or don't have zoning. Pennington County has zoning, Cluster doesn't have zoning, Mead County doesn't have zoning. And I can tell you some horror stories from there too. But the horror stories exist for the six volunteers up here that are trying to deal with the. Zoning issues that arrive from neighbor to neighbor. There is reasons for zoning. People could put in a salvage yard alongside a beautiful million-dollar house. And there's no question that it's legal under Fifth Amendment rights. But these things have filtered down through the courts and, and whatnot, so I don't make decisions like that. I'm not an attorney, I'm not a judge. I'm just a volunteer that tries to review the ordinances. And people that contest them sometimes win. The entire ordinance for zoning got thrown out for Pennington County, I believe in 1975, is that not right?
94.
94.
94? And Mois then had to be redrafted over a particular thing that doesn't have anything to do necessarily with property rights. It was a mishandled, uh, requirement of the law to have zoning. And somebody was successful with that. We also grandfather things in zoning. So please, before you comment, think of some of those things in regards to what the six people have to review. We have zoning. It's just that, that's a point of fact. If you don't want it, I guess, then somebody's got to get started and take it away. Until then, I'm going to do my job for my three years and get off of here. Now, I'd like to ask the committee to make a, or the commission to make a motion so that we can open this for additional discussion. I would like to go till 5:50 so we can talk about additional meetings. Is that something, go ahead, it's. Put a motion on the floor so we can discuss it, please.
I move that we open this up to public discussion.
Is there a second to that?
Second?
Okay, moved in second, discussion. Are you all comfortable with that? Anybody who wants to comment, you have a right to discuss this too before we do it. Okay, hearing none, any, any additional comment from the commission? Hearing none at all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, now we're open for additional, uh, discussion. I'm not going to ask you to go back quickly, get forms. I will try to recognize you as you get your hand in the air. And Dessel, you did get the, didn't get your opportunity for another minute and a half, and I know you won it yours, so if, I'm going to go ahead and put you in.
Thank you, Commissioner, Dessel Peterson again.
We are not timing this, so you can feel more relaxed.
All right.
Don't anybody notice.
One thing that I would like to say, and I, just to emphasize again, some of the things that the Commissioner Ross Connect was saying. I have property rights, you have property rights. Where they come in conflict is where government is, is entitled to step in. And make some decisions about how those conflicting rights are going to be managed. And that's what zoning is all about. And that's what we're here today to do, is to try to compromise on ways to manage those, those expectations regarding property rights. Of one property owner versus another. And I think it's absolutely within your, your right to do that, and your obligation to do that. To try to help those of us who are in that situation where we have conflicting rights, to help us manage those. Now, some of the points that I wanted to say that I didn't get to was. There's one other point that I'd like to add to the, the ordinance regarding the maximum overnight occupancy. Um, I'd like to add language that limits the bed capacity. Because we had an application that was pending before this commission. That there was one room in, in the house that had a bunk bed configuration that had room for six people in one bedroom. And it, it strikes me that if we don't put some kind of limitation on the overnight occupancy. We're going to end up with stuffing as many people as possible into these places. So that's the last comment I had on changes I'd like to see of the ordinance. Then I would like to comment on workforce housing. We spent quite a bit of time on the committee discussing the issue of the lack of workforce housing. And I don't want to use the word affordable housing, because that has bad connotations, as was indicated by some of the testimony. We are talking about housing that can be affordable to people that we need to work in our, in our industries here. And we found that there were many studies out there that were, that were peer-reviewed and independent studies. Showing that the affordable, that the workforce housing was being adversely affected. By having vacation home rentals. And then Elevate Rapid City, if I'm saying that name correctly, has done a study and has made the same finding. That the workforce housing is being adversely affected by the short-term rentals. That should justify in, in at least at the minimum of one acre. Because generally, housing that's less than one acre is going to be, excuse me, is going to be more affordable. Than those that are more than one acre. The other thing is that. There are, um, we, we have decided that, we decided that the minimum lot size was appropriate. Because it does help for some spacing between adjacent homes. Now, that's not always true, because of, we are a mountainous community. And those are some very strange lots that can kind of be formed, where you've got a relatively small buildable area. So they're still going to be close together, even though they're eight acres of property. But we thought that that was appropriate, not only for workforce housing, but also for some spacing requirements. To make it a little bit better, so that the houses are a little bit further apart. Um. The, the issue that no one seems to have talked about, but that I think we should talk about, is the recommendation of. Imposing a maximum number on the properties used for, for, uh, vacation home rentals. The committee recommends a cap of 5% of the single-family residences in unincorporated Pennington County. And we did that with a lot of thought about. What happens when it really goes. Sky-high, and it, it's, it seems like the vacation home rentals are going, uh, increasing dramatically. And as the years keep increasing. And we thought the 5% was a reasonable limitation on what would be, um. Allowed in Pennington County for them, and no one has commented on that. I thought it would be the thing that would be the most controversial thing before you. But it's, it is supported by these studies that we looked at. And there are other agencies in other places, particularly high tourist areas. Where they have put limitations like this, 5%. In order to try to maintain some workforce housing availability. Um, and that's my last comment. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, so the 5% would, uh, that would, to me, it would relate the volume, but is there anything that. Relates to density, how many you can get in a certain envelope?
Well, that's why I asked for earlier. A conditional use permit for something where, if they were within 250 feet. Of another vacation home rental, so you could look at the concentration. And decide whether it's appropriate, given the circumstances of that particular neighborhood.
Because if it get too large of a density.
Can I weigh in here, though, there's one detail you're missing. It was discussed that, and Dessel knows. We're talking about three units that would be around, say, one property owner that doesn't want to be a vacation home rental. The committee did not want to turn them into like a liquor license, these property were. Then people in the area, to keep from, uh, having vacation home rental, they become very expensive. That was, and we don't have a legal authority to say, okay, if this property owner already has one, are you following me? And the other property then can't have one, because this one has one. You get into that game, or it becomes a dollars and cents game. And that was why that wasn't included.
I asked for that at the committee level, and the committee did not adopt it. So I mean.
And that's the only reason I wanted to add that in.
They did not adopt.
There was concern about what would happen dollars and cents wise.
I think what I see is mixing residential with commercial. I mean, I know that a vacation home rental is residential, but they're for profit. Every one, every vacation home rental has one common denominator, and that's for profit. They're not doing this because they want to help the general public, it's, it's about making money. And if you get too much of that in a traditional residential neighborhood, I think you change the dynamics of the neighborhood, and that's. What a lot of people, when I sit there. Uh, if they were there first, and it was an established residential neighborhood, then we got to, uh, take that in, in consideration. And if you have a home appraised. That residential appraiser is going to appraise it by the square foot, that's how you're going to do it. I got a request the other day from a bank out of Nebraska. They wanted me to do an appraisal on a vacation home rental in, uh, Lead. And they, they were very specific, we want this done on an income approach, and that's just the way the. These things are bought and sold, it's not per square foot, it's how much money they can generate. So I don't know, it's just, uh.
Thank you, Dessel. I'm going to move on and then take the next one. A gentleman over here had his hand up first. But I did want to let you know, the committee did discuss that, and we don't have our legal here tonight. And I have a strange feeling, and we're certainly proposing additional meetings, so. Uh, I'm going to say the legal will be here in the future. They need to explain to you how the vacation home rental and what Ron was talking about came about. And, and so that it's clear, it wasn't decided on a commercial basis, it was decided on a similar use basis. In other words, a resident lives there, sleeps in it, comes and goes, that sort of thing. And that was the decision of the court that a vacation home rental didn't change that use. Just so you know, and, and can add that to your thinking, but we'll try to have the legal here to help you too. Uh, where if you have questions like that, that at least we know where it came from. Yes, sir. Please introduce yourself for the record.
Mike Lowry, uh, my wife and I are here. Um, we moved to Rapid City about a year ago as a part of, uh, our transition to retirement, and we bought. Three short-term rentals in the area. My daughter graduated from South Dakota School of Mines this past, and we also owned a property that we bought that was, used to be a long-term rental. And she and her roommates have been living in it. Um, and then we bought, also bought our personal residence. Uh, you brought the, uh, the point of that we do this for profit. Yes, yes, we do. And when we do long-term rentals, which we have both in Colorado and here in, in Rapid City. We're doing it to make money, and you know, and that's. You know, I believe that's our right, and it's an American way, and some people choose to make money by sitting behind a desk and, and working on an Excel spreadsheet. And some people choose it to run a bar, or some people, you know, self pornography. It's not, it's not my, it's not my right to tell them that, you know, that they can't do that. I may not like it, but it's their right to do it, and I, I was in the military for five years. And I would tell people that I, I don't always agree with other people, but I will fight for your right to do things at the top of my lungs. So I don't think that the profit motive is somehow, uh, you know, less virtuous. Um, I have six children, you know, I'm taking care of them, I'm keeping my property up to, up to, up to snuff. And as far as the properties that I purchased. Two out of the three, I would say, are in much better condition than they are when I bought them. The neighborhoods that they are in here in Rapid City are a better place because of them. The, the house looks better, the lawns look better, the snow gets cleared, the garage, the garbage is taken out. I, I know all my neighbors of my short-term rentals, they were not happy. When they found out that what, what I was going to be using them for. But they, we are all on speaking terms now. One of us had his, for wine and cheese, to talk about some things, we made some adjustments. Um, and we're all on speaking terms, and, and they all have my personal phone number. So, um, I think this is more about policing neighbors than this about zoning. And I think that it was said by several other people that this, this belongs in covenants and HOAs. And not in planning and zoning commissions. We were licensed by the South Dakota Department of Health when we first got our short-term rentals. We had to do that for our short-term rentals, but we didn't have to do that for our long-term rental. So I, I, I see that there's some kind of disconnect there. Um. The, the other thing about, uh. The other point I'd like to make is about enforcement of existing regulations. The South Dakota Department of Health has a checklist that we had to go through. We had to put in new windows in one of our houses that complied with egress for hotels. As a part of that Department of Health, uh, regulation. So, again, we've improved the house. Um, we do have occupancy limits that are set by the South Dakota Department of Health. They come in and they count the number of bedrooms and the number of egress windows, and they, they designate. How many bedrooms we have in the house, and they tell us how many we can advertise our self, our short-term rental on. On Airbnb, Verba, or any other site. They tell us. We don't determine that. Right, so it's, it's a redundant requirement to, to start talking about. That, that you would tell people how many they can have in the house, because the South Dakota already takes care of that, as a part of the licensing process. But talking about the licensing process. Only, only about 10% of the people are actually licensed. So that's where the problem is. It's not, the problem is not creating more regulations. This is like, this is like gun control on, on law-abiding citizens. Why do you need to have more, more, more regulation on guns? To cover, to cover things that we already comply with? You really need to go after the people that don't comply with the rules, right? Um, there are ordinance regulations within the city of Rapid City. And I'm sure there's, there's, there's noise ordinances, there's, there's other ordinances. But if, if you want to have control of things, that would be the way to go about doing it. Put laws to cover things that are being violated or that are public nuisance. Don't, don't make a one-acre minimum to try and pigeonhole something that doesn't belong there. As far as Airbnb and Verba. As far as Airbnb and Verba, if I want to travel on Verba, I have to give them a credit card, I have to give them my social security number, they run a background check, they make sure that I'm not some felon or somebody that's going to be, that's going to basically make their thing look bad. Now, do people get around that? Sure they do. But I get reviewed, my places get reviewed every single time somebody stays there. I review all my guests. When they cut, when they, when they instant book or book mine one of my places, I see all the reviews from all the other hosts, and I know whether they're going to be a problem or not. And I can decline them from coming to my, to my place. When they leave, we're messaging back and forth. I review them when I go in to clean the place. My wife and my two boys, their eleven and fourteen-year-old, go in and clean these places with us. We see what they've done. We see what the lawn looks like. Our neighbors have a chance to interact with us. I guarantee you, I have more interaction with my STR neighbors than I do with my neighbors in my own personal residence.
Mr. Chair, you know, I appreciate the good operators, but you're not the one that gets the phone calls complaining about being next door to a vacation home rental that is not being run properly. I get those phone calls, and as an elected official, I have to do something about it. So I just want you to know that.
I understand, you have a job to do. I'm just, I'm just responding to.
Just saying, there's good operators and there's some that probably aren't.
Right, and that's what, the people that are not taking care of their rental homes, are abusing their rights as property owners and are creating issues. There are other redresses in this in the form of ordinances that cover noise ordinances, et cetera, et cetera, that would address that, not the zoning commission.
Michael, can I get you to wrap it up? We've got a number of other people. I believe Nathan, your hand was up next, and then this lady right here.
Yep. Two more really quick things. I, you're right. I believe that people should be contactable. There should be a local contact in the area. But again, that should also be something that's enforced, right? So that, so that somebody can be contacted and everyone knows who that person is that the contact is. So if a neighbor has a problem, they contact that person. If they don't, they have an extent to go to, and the person can get their license revoked. But if 90% of the people don't have licenses, again, you're trying to put a regulation on something that nobody's paying attention to begin with. The last thing about the water use, I can show you the utility bills from my short-term rentals versus my personal residence. I have five people in my house. I use twice as much water as my short-term rentals do. I use the same amount of garbage, and so I'm using less surfaces from a water standpoint than my own personal residence. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Nathan, I believe you were the next hand up, and then this young lady here, and gentleman over there, and then we've got one back here and one behind him. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you could try to, we're not limiting, but try not to go through anything you already went through, Nathan.
So once upon a time, I was born a long time. Just kidding. Let me turn on my stopwatch so that I don't waste too much of your guys' times. And thank you for showing up for this. I do appreciate volunteering. I didn't realize you were a volunteer. That's kind of a bummer deal. So in regards to a number of these things, like the one acre minimum, the reason that we haven't brought some of our properties, so I am a manager, I'm actually not for making this a property management only. I don't think I have the right, as Jess said online, she's going to do a better job than I'm going to do in the sense that if she owns those properties, she's going to care about things that as a professional, I'm probably not going to care about in the same way. I think we do a really good job, our reviews show it, but a homeowner will do things for free that I would have to charge for. So I don't want this to become a licensed thing. I like, I could give you some anecdotal, but I'll try to, try to skip some of that. So that being said, I try to comply with every law that we can. There are some short-term rentals in Rapid City that we have, that we manage, we're not able to comply because they're less than an acre. Rapid City doesn't really have, I've talked to the zoning in Rapid City, they don't really, is against the rules, isn't against the rules, your residential, your commercial, it's a mess. And I definitely think we need to update what's going on here. But if we made it more inclusive, then people like myself would be more than happy to push my owners into it. Another thing I think that's worth mentioning is, you know, most people think that, hey, I've got five, six, 10, 15, you know, 100 vacation rentals, is those are the owners I'm working for. You know, Vacas of the Hills, they have, you know, hundreds. They don't have hundreds. They have multiple owners. My biggest owner has a couple. All of the units that we're managing, there's that side of it. So these are, like someone else said earlier, these are locals. These are the people that grew up here. I was born and raised in Rapid City. I've lived here my whole life except for college. This is where I love, one of the things that always drove me nuts and where I think Airbnb has been helpful, if you go into the hills, you look around, nobody's complaining about the vacation homes that aren't being rented out. The multimillionaires, I've worked in hundreds of them. Nobody cares about those because they're not bothering their neighbors, but I can't use the house. Love to see, you know, what a $600,000, $1,000 house looks like. If I can rent it once a year, it's the only time I'm ever going to get to stay in one. I don't make those kind of wages to buy it in the hills alone. So up until vacation rentals, it was always, it was always out-of-staters, it seemed like, that came in that would buy it. There weren't people that were local. And then it would be them that would be the most angry if you, because they're retired, they didn't, they're there all day long, they'd get mad, well, you're cutting across my property to get to this trail. Well, we didn't know there's a trail here. Or we thought it was Black Hills, look at this map, shows it. Well, it's not. And I've had owners block off public trails and say that was on their property. That's happened. We're not creating those zoning rules. This democratizes the hills' ownership to locals. The owners that I have, they're local people that never thought they would do it. They're people who are retiring earlier than they ever thought possible. Instead of 65, they're 55 or 60. Those are the people that we're hurting. Who are we benefiting? I know there's a few, and I do hear their concerns, and I'd like to talk with them and see, but those are the owners that you're going to hurt by change, without changing any of this. Those are my only points on that.
Thank you, Nathan.
Absolutely.
Yes, ma'am. Please introduce yourself again, just for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Lacy Sosa. First of all, I do want to acknowledge the importance of us having county officials, state officials, local officials who do volunteer their time. My, coming from a family of people who are legislators, my mom has been a legislator for the last six years, my brother was a legislator for 22 years, and it gets heated. It gets emotional in these rooms, and I know that. And I've heard the phone calls, I've taken the phone calls on behalf of my mom and my brother, and, and I know that all of your time is valuable. So thank you so much for being here. But I say all of that also to qualify myself, I'm very involved in this community. I, I'm just going to give you a little bit of my story because this is an emotional thing. I think there's two ways to look at this. There's the factual way of looking at it, and there's the emotional way of looking at it. I am tied to this emotionally, but I have a reason. I, my husband left my children and I several years ago, and he left me in a home. That home was the place where I raised my children for the next six years. And when interest rates went down, I'm a mortgage lender as well, so I always had the dream of being a real estate investor. When interest rates went down, I saw my opportunity, and I jumped on it. I moved up to the hills and I turned my residence into a short-term, well, at that time, I was going to turn it into a long-term rental, and have benefited from that because, because of my opportunity that I took to jump on the lower interest rates. I am a single, I was a single parent. I made that way, and it wasn't easy. But I had this dream, like many have talked about, the American dream, and I just have this one property. Right now, as a mortgage lender, I'm not going to lie, real estate is not great. This is my source of income right now. My source of income was greatly hindered, though, when I had a family who was displaced by fire, and my heart spoke over my head. And instead of listening to my business mind, I listened to my heart. I had 11 people that were displaced by fire move into my property, and I put them in a lease, a six-month lease. They destroyed my property. I went in there in June after having to ask them to leave. I had roaches, I had $14,000 worth of damage, and that was money that a single mom cannot come up with. And I had to make a choice, and I had to make a choice quickly because I needed my property cash flow as well. So I appreciate the idea of getting these things to run through quickly because I had to start cash flowing on my property, and I opened an Airbnb. Have any of you looked at the county website to see what the, what the rules and regulations are on opening an Airbnb? If you haven't, I invite you to do that because it is very difficult to find what you need to do. And as somebody that had never done this before, I started Googling, and I didn't find it. And I didn't find it until I spoke with our friend Jordan in here, and he started giving me some guidance on that and started mentoring me. And I was thankful that he did that because I didn't even know that these properties had to be licensed. All I knew is that I had an emergency, I had to start cash flowing my property, and I had to take care of my babies. And so I'm not like some of these people in here who have several properties, and they have their rights too, and thank God for these people that are coming and standing up here today. But I'm saying this from, from the aspect of a single mom, someone who has hit a hard time in real estate, and I know there's other options for me to do other things, but I'm just very thankful that I did have this opportunity to have a rental. And right now, I do have workforce in there. I have five guys who are out in New Underwood building a solar farm, and they're very thankful for my property and the short-term opportunity that I gave to them. And when, I also just want to end this with adding that when I do have somebody move into my property for even a short amount of time, well, because it's a short-term rental, but when I have these people come, we have these discussions and they're lovely, and I send them to local places. I have them ask about markets. I send them to Fork Grill, I send them to our farmer's market, I send them to Staple and Spice, I send them to all of these different places when they want to know more about our community. As a graduate of Leadership Rapid City, I fell in love with this community when I took that course, and I want to share that with everybody. And so I'm thankful for all of the visitors here that I can share that passion for my community with, and it's not just a short-term rental. To me, it's a way of life. And so I do just ask you to consider those of us who are making a living doing this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lacy. There's a gentleman about in the third row over here. Yes. Then there was another gentleman behind that had his hand up. Okay, now I see back there. Okay. Oh, we forgot you two. We're going to stick you in between. All right, we're going to fit you in. All right, we've got about 10 minutes to go here, and then we've got to discuss about additional meetings, please, if we can.
My name is Travis Hawn. Wasn't really prepared to speak tonight, but I also didn't know I was getting voted. So I just kind of want to share a couple of things that I've kind of gathered here. You know, I think the main focus here is one side of the people that oppose, if you will, and the people that are pro, but, you know, the thing about these vacation rentals for a lot of the people that travel to our area being that we are tourist-driven, A, is it's a short-term season, that these Airbnbs and vacation rentals are busy. This is not a year-long thing. The people that come here are coming here to tourists, they're bringing their families, they're going to Mount Rushmore, they're going to the caves. This is not Vegas, this is not Scottsdale, this is not a party destination. Not saying there isn't some bachelor, bachelorette parties, but, you know, I seem, feel like people, other people I've talked to, is that's a main concern, is all these big house parties going on. They're families. They're great people, and it makes them affordable for these people. You know, I've had a lot of people that have reached out and, you know, they'll bring their mom and dad and their kids, their grandma and grandpa, and they'll be able to afford to stay in a house altogether for 250 bucks a night versus getting three rooms at 200 bucks a night. So from the economic standpoint, it arguably brings more tourists to our area because they have an affordable place to stay. Now, the biggest thing that I take from all this, and, you know, I get it, there's got to be safety, not only for the neighbors, but also for the people staying in the home. There's got to be, you know, proper steps taken, fire extinguishers, escape routes, emergency phone numbers, all that stuff, it's so important. But the one acre deal, I just don't see that having any implication of any of the issues. Are people going to be less likely to steal your, the neighbor's gas can if it's over an acre? Are you still going to hear them if they're loud at an acre versus .99? For sure you are. You know, and it's been touched on a million times tonight, is that to be successful in the vacation rental business, your property has to be clean, it has to be appealing, not only from the exterior, but you need good beds. Reviews are super important. And, you know, from, and I think I speak for any of the Airbnb owners, everybody's kind of on the same page that if we have a bad experience, or good, we communicate that, we rate them. So when they try to go book the next time, the next owner will see, yeah, they were, they've been great, book them. Or, no, they've wrecked stuff, they were loud, they were noisy, they were a nuisance, not going to book them. And that would be the protection for the neighbors. And vice versa. If they review us and it was dirty, it was, it wasn't clean, it was hazardous, you know, then you're not going to make it. That's just the way it is. And that's why these property had, properties arguably have such a high value, is not necessarily the income they bring in, I mean, that's definitely part of it, but a lot of these properties are remodeled, refurbished, there's a lot of time and effort that goes into making these properties appealing to, I'm sure everybody's been on the websites, there's a million different options. You have to stand out to the competition. And not only is that benefiting the neighborhood, it's benefiting the market, but it's benefiting the contractors that are doing the work, it's benefiting the lawn care professionals that you hire to mow your yard. There's a lot of trickle-down business economically that comes from these properties. And the one thing that I really can't see making a difference is whether it's on one acre or half an acre, and, you know, I feel like that would be something that I would definitely think twice about getting rid of, if you will, because, you know, that could take some potentially really good properties out of the game because they just aren't on a big enough lot.
I'm going to interject, you turned around, came back to one acre, and it helped me. I still got two more people to get on before we discuss.
Sorry. Yep, and one more thing to touch base. Owning both long-term and short-term rentals, myself, I will tell you that my long-term rentals put a way bigger footprint on the adjacent neighbors than my short-term does. I've talked to both of my neighbors, I have very good relationships with both of my neighbors at both properties, and my Airbnb neighbors, their comments are, we never see them, they're gone all day, they come home, they grill burgers, they go to bed. Not so much the case on my long-term side. So I'll leave it with that. I appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just one quick point. I think the one acre, one of the things that I see with the one acre is that you've got to have a minimal lot size to have a well and a septic system. And I think that would come into play relative to the one acre. If you get below that, then with your setbacks and your sizes of your septic system and the well, I think that gets a little problematic. So that's probably one reason why that one acre rule's in place, just.
What if you're on city water and sewer?
We're just Stockton County.
Got you. Okay.
I am going to put him ahead, and we'll still get you in here. Go right ahead.
Hey, my name is Jacob Franz. I own one short-term rental, it's located outside of Rapid City within Pennington County. It actually technically is on city sewer. We do have our own well, it's located in less than an acre, for what that's worth. And I just wanted to make a couple of comments. First of all, I understand the balance is important here. I'm not the one that's fielding calls all day with complaints about what's going on with short-term rentals. I do feel for what these people are going through, I understand that. I think it's important that we address that. I would also say, though, I don't feel like this is narrowly tailored to address that while leaving as much freedom as you can for the neighboring lot. The one acre has been touched on numerous times before. I think that's, you know, the fact that it's always been that way, you know, doing something because it's always been that way, I never think is a good reason for continuing to do it. I think that's poor reasoning, I think that needs to be looked at. I also think that short-term neighbors, you know, short-term tenants are not inherently bad neighbors, any more than long-term tenants are inherently good neighbors. I've got a neighbor right now that I'd gladly trade for a short-term rental, for whatever that's worth. I would also say the fees seem pretty egregious. You're looking at $500 application fee, $500 review fee, two $1,000 payments each year, that's $3,000. I'm not sure how that improves the situation for the neighbors. Where's that money going? What's it doing? I think we need a better explanation of that. And that's really all that I have to say.
Appreciate it. We're going to do a better job of explaining the fees too as we get into this as a commission.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm Corey Myron. Um, I'm an Airbnb owner. Um, I was not born in a generation that was lucky enough to get a pension. I've always had to work for everything that I've got. I've lost my 401K not once, not twice, but three times in my lifetime. One of those was a company, I'm sure everybody's familiar with Gateway Two Thousand Computers. It was founded on the other side of the state. And I'm pushing fifty now and I came up to the realization, I've got to do something. You know, when I'm at seventy-five years old, eighty years old, am I going to be as competitive as that next coworker that's thirty years old and be able to maintain my job? Probably not. Even though that there is, there's laws to protect you as you age. Um, we're facing, my generation is facing that realization. So my wife and I, we built a house in twenty nineteen up in Auburn Hills. Did not finish the basement. Our neighbors did the same thing as well. They, they started their Airbnb first. Then we looked at their example. We built theirs out through a, a construction company. I spent a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for one bedroom, kitchenette and a bathroom. And I camouflaged that as best as I could in my neighborhood despite two neighbors that were totally against it. I walked them through and this is my plan. I'm, I'm going for a little bit higher insulation. Like somebody said, we want to have somebody that overlooks the competition, that stands out. And you're like, oh, okay, you're doing the right thing here. We, we support you in this. But I still hear some of the, they hear saying the concerns of, you know, speeders, uh, even though the neighbor that I've got on video camera, because I've got nine security cameras outside of my place. I, I've got him on camera, he's peeling out of his driveway. But he's, he's concerned for the safety of the children in the neighborhood. And the next neighbor, he's got a Cogra Mustang, same thing. And what they're saying is, well, the diminishment of my, of my property. And I've worked in insurance for many years as an adjuster for a diminishment of salvage, diminishment of value for a piece of property in the state of South Dakota is just like capital gains. You have to sell to realize your loss. And there's not one case that I've ever found where somebody was able to prove that their property has actually reduced in value by an Airbnb. Um, or even a rental. And with these, with these tenants or with my neighbors, I proposed to them, okay, if I'm facing to the situation that I'm, that you guys shut down Airbnb, what's my alternative? I now have a house payment in an area that I can't use. Um, am I going to turn around and fold business? To me, bankruptcy is not an option. What's the other alternative? Long-term rental? Well, then you've got tenant rights and I, I've known enough people that have, that, that have watched have hard-riding tenants and as well as an adjuster, what hard-riding tenants will do to a property. If you get the wrong people in, how hard it is to get them out unless they don't pay. But if they pay, it's near impossible to get them out and they're tearing up the property and they're just, they're just unleashed in the neighborhood. So there's that side of the aspect as well of what we have to face, have to consider if we pass something like this. Because I look at this and I've got Jordan and his team managing my property. I've got to pay them a percentage. And I'm seeing, you know, all these standards and the, uh, the plans that I would have to turn on either scope, stand in line, just like the DMV for three and a half hours, like I did this last summer, to get through these plans. Or I got to pay him a percentage, yet more, that eats into it. And is it profitable for me to turn on and do that? Or is it no longer worth it where I just throw in the chips? And I, I convert over to that long-term and either not use the, not use that property or sell the property and go find something more affordable? Or if I'd converted over something else? Um, but my property, I mean, it's gorgeous looking property. I walk any of you guys through. I'll have Jordan walk you through. Um, but I work for a living. My wife works for a living. Um, I, I, I think a lot of this is, this is just a start towards just closing down the whole aspect of it. And the thing I always loved about coming out to Rapid City where the rental properties that we can go to ever since I was a little kid in the seventies to go up and stay in a cabin. And I just see this ending a lot of this.
Thank you, Corey. I appreciate it. We, we, it may take longer than five minutes to discuss meetings. Um, I'm going to stop the testimony at this point in time. Um, Commissioner, you want to talk about additional meetings? We've got Brittany right here. Brittany, can you get up by the mic in case they got questions for you? For scheduling? First off, I guess, do you guys want additional meetings? We're short one member, uh, that's on the Zoom, but we'll hear. Can you, are you still talking to us, Jim?
I'm still talking to you.
Good. We're ready. Go ahead. Discuss what you would like. If we're going, first off, are we going to, how many people in the audience want another meeting to continue this? Okay, now, is that the same under the commission? That was down near a hundred percent vote.
We need another meeting, you know. And I never thought that we were going to have any vote on this anyway. This is a public.
There wasn't going to be any vote.
I have a number of things to address that, uh, we'll take another meeting.
And before Brittany talks about the meeting, what he's talking about is this, this ordinance will eventually come before these same people, Planning Commission, for review. And then we go through it item by item, just, uh, what would I say? We go through the things that upset you, item by item. And we go from there. Go ahead.
Sure. And this meeting was just intended to take testimony only, so there was never intending to be any vote on it at all. Um, I took pretty good notes on comments, so I will forward all of those notes to the Planning Commission. So you have them, um, in the next packet going forward. Um, we will have to advertise the next meeting. Um, so I think the next.
Do you have some dates in mind right at this time?
Well, March thirteenth is the next Planning Commission Day. Um, when's your next submittal deadlines? Do you wanted to hold another special hearing versus having it?
Jim, your dog's voting for you again. Is, is the four o'clock time better than going like after supper? After supper, people didn't tend to like, and people don't tend to like the eight and nine o'clock in the morning meetings. Is this four o'clock time better? We had really good attendance here today. Okay. Go ahead, Kevin.
I would certainly like to do this as a special meeting. Trying to do this during a regular commission meeting is, is not fair to the public. Um, to be able to give them the time required for comment.
Exactly. Uh, is it easier for commissioners that, uh, if we were to meet on the thirteenth, would it be easier to stay in and have a meeting on, at four o'clock on the thirteenth?
I prefer a separate day, but that's up to you.
I agree. Got to get Brittany back up here and.
I'm just, we're just trying to make sure we meet our advertising deadlines.
All right.
Do we have advertising deadlines? So we have to meet by statute?
Yes, understand.
So I'm just trying to find out what date is the soonest that we could, if we advertise.
On a separate meeting, they don't want it on the same days as the commission.
Okay. So we're trying to find if Jerry advertises tomorrow and it goes out in the newspapers when the soonest date would, time would be.
And this will be on your site so that people don't have to find it as a legal notice in the paper. Because some people go to sleep reading those.
So the soonest would be any time during the week of March sixth, so we can meet the advertise.
March sixth?
Yep. So any day after March sixth.
Today's Wednesday. Why not another Wednesday?
So that would be the eighth of March.
And the audience preferred the four o'clock again. Everybody that's here, get that. We'll be here. Now, before we adjourn, I want to thank all of you.
So we need a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
The motion to set the meeting date to March eighth, that four.
We're going to do that first, right?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we have a special meeting for March eighth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Four to six.
Second.
Moved and seconded to have the meeting, March eighth from four to six. We do like to stay with the two-hour time limit. That does let people come and go and they can plan to be here. And if they're a little late, they can still get here. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Brian?
I just, uh, I always like to play the devil's advocate. Uh, I, I do appreciate everybody coming out tonight. Uh, I've learned a lot. That's why we're here. We're not here to really vote on anything. We're here to, uh, listen to the concerns of the folks that, uh, run vacation home rentals. Once again, I appreciate, appreciate everybody coming out and, uh, I, I always like to play that devil's advocate, but, uh, anyhow, I'm open-minded.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. It will be on March eighth at four PM, same room. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Someone moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye, Michael.
Aye.
Pose. Word adjourned. Thank you.